Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the December 17th meeting of the Gastonia City Council. We're glad to have everyone here, we're glad to have the TV audience here, and especially, certainly this joyful time of the year. At this time, I would like to ask you to bow in prayer, after which, we will have the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Pray with me if you will. Our Heavenly Father, thank you, thank you for this day, this beautiful day, thank you for this life, thank you for our loved ones, thank you for everything that you've done for us and are doing for us, thank you for our health, locally, thank you for our city, county, state, and our nation. And we thank you so much for all the gifts that you've given us. In your name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would, at this time, like to, excuse me, I would like to have item C, adoption of the agenda, a motion. Second, all right, discussion, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, item D is approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting, November 19th, 2013. Is there a motion?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Thank you. Okay. I would like to, if I could, at this time, call on Councilman Walter Kimball, under item E, Awards Ceremonies and Promotions Committee, the first one, recognition, resolutions, excuse me, recognizing citizens who provided lifesaving assistance.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I would like to call up Chief Watts from our fire department, and also, I'd like to call up those that so selfishly risked their lives to pull Mr. John Maddox out of vehicular fire that could have very easily taken their lives. So at this time, I'd like to call up Mr. Matt Hudson, Michael Ewing, Steve Hardy, and
Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us. We have a synopsis of their heroic events on that day of November 19th. However, they say a picture many times is worth a thousand words, and I'm not sure how many words it is when we have folks here that were actually there. So I'd like to take this opportunity, number one, to also call up Mr. John Maddox and his wife Janet, if you'd like to come, I believe she's also a city employee. And I'd like to turn the podium over to Chief Watts. Chief, I know that you had rolled up while the, I believe, the vehicle was fully involved, and you were actually able to witness the heroic actions of these gentlemen, and the wonderful outcome that we had, and how they all, their actions epitomize the heroes that we have in the city of Gastonia. Chief Watts?
Thank you, Councilman Kimball. Ladies and gentlemen, I normally don't like to read things, just read them, but I don't want to miss anything, so I'm gonna, if you'll indulge me, I'm gonna just read this memo that I sent to Chief Welch shortly after this incident occurred. On November 19th, 2013, at approximately 6:30, a vehicle accident occurred on Kendrick Road near the intersection of Royal Oaks Lane. A small pickup truck driven by John Maddox left the roadway, came to rest on its side, on the shoulder, and caught fire. Mr. Maddox was not able to exit the vehicle on his own. Shortly after the incident occurred, the citizens listed below drove up on the scene and stopped to assist. Matt Hudson of 3707 Beatty Road in Gastonia, Michael Ewing of 4305 Knightwood Drive of Gastonia, Steve Hardy, 3425 Eric Glenn Drive Gastonia, and Eric Crane of 3859 Yellow Jasmine Drive in Gastonia. Mr. Hardy was unable to be with us this evening. These men first used a dry, small dry powder extinguisher retrieved from Mr. Ewing's vehicle in an attempt to extinguish the fire that was burning on the undercarriage of Mr. Maddox's vehicle. They were successful in partially extinguishing the fire, however, after they had fully discharged the extinguisher, there was still a small amount of fire remaining. This is about the time that I arrived on the scene in my personal vehicle. The men initially intended to wait for the fire and emergency medical units to arrive and allow them to move Mr. Maddox. This was in an effort to prevent further injury to Mr. Maddox. This soon proved to be impossible due to the fact that the fire began to grow. Deciding to take action, the men realized the position of the vehicle on its side would not allow them to bring Mr. Maddox out the doors. Mr. Hudson and Mr. Crane were able to gain access to Mr. Maddox through the rear window of the pickup truck. Assisted by Mr. Hardy and Mr. Ewing, they pulled Mr. Maddox out of the vehicle and carried him up to the road. Less than 30 seconds later, and this is not an exaggeration, I was actually there, the entire passenger compartment of Mr. Maddox's vehicle was engulfed in flames. The events described above happened very quickly. Approximately three minutes elapsed from the time these men stopped at the scene until Mr. Maddox was out of his vehicle and up on the road. I have no doubt that if this group of citizens had not stopped and taken the actions they took, the outcome of this would have been very different. I can truthfully say that these were the most heroic actions taken by a group of citizens at any incident I have been involved in during my fire service career. These actions were taken by these men with no regard for their personal well-being. The success of this rescue were dependent on each action that was taken. I would like to recommend that we thank these men publicly for their heroism. And I would be remiss if I didn't add that there was a couple of more citizens that did stop that evening. One that I remember was a registered nurse, a young lady, and she stopped to assist, and there may have been a couple more that I wasn't able to get their name. If you're listening to this and you hear it, please know that we thank you also. It's actions like this, gentlemen, that make me proud to be a citizen and work in Gastonia and Gaston County. You're to be commended, and the fire department appreciates it. Thank you.
Mr. Maddox, I would like to give you the opportunity, if you have anything you'd like to say, and I know that you've had really the opportunity to speak with these fellows, you know, since the incident, and I know, you know, from my experience, that many times that it's very tumultuous and sometimes thank yous, although they're meant, they fall by the wayside sometimes in emergency operations, so please, I'd like to...
Ma'am, if you'd like to go.
Well, first...
Come around this way, guys.
Oh, yes, definitely.
Thank you.
First, I would like to say to these guys here, thank you for saving my life, because that's exactly what they did, when you look at all the evidence of what happened that night. If it wouldn't have been for them, I would not be standing here now. I used to always have this little thing I used to say when I meet people, and they'd say, "How you doing today? How you doing today?" I used to always tell them, I said, "Well, you know, as long as I drive by the cemetery and don't see my tombstone over there, I'm having a good day." Well, I'm here to tell you that on November 19th, I almost had the worst day of my life, a terrible day, if it wasn't for these gentlemen here. I, like the chief, I, you know, I believe that my words would be inadequate to explain what's in my heart and mind right now for these guys here, so I would like to just read something that I wrote for them. And this is to each one of them. It says, "Some call you a hero, you like to call yourself another good Samaritan. As far as for me, you are not only my hero and good Samaritan, but on November 19th, 2013, you became my guardian angel. They say God looks out for young children and fools. There is no doubt in anyone's mind that upon reflection on my truck accident on Kendrick Road, God had commanded Jesus to cast out His fishing net and harvest the souls of fools, and I was captured in that holy net. However, I was fortunate to have four angels to champion for me. God knows that it was only through Jesus' enthusiasm for the strong advocacy of my guardian angels to rescue me from the accident and encompassing fire. Along with their unwavering commitment to save my life, God the Father commanded Jesus to remove me from the net of death and replace me back into the ocean of life with a personal mandate for me to strive to be the best child of Christ that I can be." And I would like to finish by saying, during this time of season, one of my shows that I love to watch all the time is "It's a Wonderful Life" with Jimmy Stewart. And in that, everybody should know the plot, that, you know, he's saved by an angel trying to get his wings. So I'm here to say, and the way that they could determine that the angel's got his wings was there would be a bell rung to say that the angel has got his wings. So I'm here to say that today, I'm gonna ring a bell for my angels, because they received their wings. So for Matt Hudson, Michael Ewing, Eric Crane, and Steve Hardy, I want to say thank you for saving my life.
Mrs. Maddox, would you like to say anything?
I didn't prepare a speech because I felt like this was his time, but for my family, we truly, truly thank you all. I told them the accident happened on Tuesday, and I celebrated my birthday on Friday, and then thanked everyone, and holidays, so it was the perfect gift for me. Thank you.
Fellas, do you have any comments?
Can I add something, Mr. Kimball?
Sure.
The thing that struck me about these gentlemen is when I did call them to tell them we wanted to recognize them, the comments that I've got was, "I haven't done anything." That's what impresses me so much about this community and the people that live in this community, because that's a common attitude in our community, and I appreciated that. Thank you, Mr. Kimball.
Fellas, we have both proclamations and certificates of appreciation for what you did, and I know that everyone in the council and Mayor Bridgman who signed these knows that a mere piece of paper really fails to tell the story of what you all did for somebody that you didn't know, and that there's no greater honor to be given to someone than when you can save a life of your fellow man, and when you have a fire professional that says, straight up, "If it wasn't for you guys being there, you know, things would have been a lot worse for Mr. Maddox," and I guess maybe say that you got your Christmas present a little bit earlier this year. So I'll read the proclamations that are signed by the mayor for each of you. And again, it's only a small token of what this city feels in its heart for what you all did. Whereas, on November 19th, 2013, Mr. John Maddox lost control of his vehicle while driving on Kendrick Road near the intersection with Royal Oaks Lane and overturned, coming to rest on its side. Whereas, as a result of the accident, Mr. Maddox was unable to extricate himself from the vehicle, and subsequently, the vehicle caught fire. Mr. Matt Hudson, Mr. Michael Ewing, Mr. Eric Crane, and Mr. Steve Hardy came upon the crash. They exited their vehicles and determined how they could provide assistance. Whereas, Mr. Hardy, along with other citizens that stopped to provide the assistance, along with the other gentlemen, used a small dry chemical fire extinguisher retrieved from another citizen's car in an attempt to extinguish the flames. And whereas, Mr. Hardy, Mr. Hudson, Mr. Ewing, and Mr. Crane realized that the fire extinguisher would not be sufficient to completely extinguish the fire, and disregarding personal danger to themselves, assisted other citizens while removing Mr. Maddox from the vehicle by pulling him through the rear window just before the passenger compartment of the vehicle was fully involved in flames. Now therefore, the mayor and the city council, the city of Gastonia, do hereby recognize and commend Mr. Steve Hardy, Mr. Matt Hudson, Mr. Michael Ewing, and Mr. Eric Crane, and present them with the citizens' award for selfless actions in assistance to Mr. Maddox at great risk to their own personal safety. In witness whereof, I herein to set my seal and cause the official seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed to the 17th day of December, 2013. The Honorable Mayor, John D. Bridgman, and Virginia L. Crichton, City Clerk. Fellas. Matt?
Thank you, sir.
Michael?
Thank you, sir.
Steve? Eric? And Ginny, can we make sure that we have, possibly have Assistant Chief here? Chief, would it be possible that you could maybe send someone over to Mr. Hardy's house along with a member of the fire department to deliver this, please? Chief, thank you. Gentlemen, again, mere thanks and something like that. And you as well, sir. Thank you, fellas. Merry Christmas.
Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Thank you so much. Merry Christmas.
Second.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Uh-huh. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Congratulations, great job.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Yeah. Thanks for doing something simple, but something real good. Thanks for being there. Hey, John, how you doing? Son of a gun, man. Nine wives, like a cat. So, hey, how are you? Hey, Janet, how are you?
It is. Good to see you.
Our second proclamation, Councilman Gallagher's gonna join me in a moment, is for, everybody calls him Bill, Dr. Bill Current, Senior, and I'd like you to come up, please, Dr. Current.
Ask his wife, Liz, did you want her?
Yeah.
Liz?
Liz, current.
Welcome, doctor. Yeah. Tonight, we have a proclamation for you, Dr. Current. It goes through a little bit of your life and your career, certainly doesn't touch on all the high points, this is just a brief synopsis, very brief, when you consider a life's been condensed onto kind of one page, but I'm gonna read the proclamation, and then, Jim, if you have anything else you'd like to say, and then I'm gonna turn the mic over to you, sir. Whereas, Dr. William Bill A. Current, Senior, was born in Gaston County and graduated from Gastonia High School before attending North Carolina State University and the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill to earn his Bachelor of Science degree and Doctorate of Dental Surgery degrees. And after completing dental school and a tour in the United States Navy Dental Corps, Dr. Current returned to Gastonia and began practicing dentistry. Whereas throughout his career, Dr. Current has been an active community leader and a leader in his profession, serving as president of many organizations, including the Gaston County Dental Society, the First District Dental Society of North Carolina, North Carolina Dental Society, UNC Dental Alumni Association, the North Carolina Dental Foundation, and the Gaston Family Health Services. Additionally, Dr. Current served as the chairperson of the North Carolina Dental Society Ethics Committee and the Gaston County Board of Health for two terms. He was then appointed by Governor Jim Martin to the Psychiatric and Substance Abuse Committee of the North Carolina State Health Coordination Council. And whereas, Dr. Current is a past president of the Gastonia Rotary Club, a former member of the J.C.'s and the Chamber of Commerce, and has served the community by participating in various boards and committees. And whereas, in 2004, Dr. Current was elected to the North Carolina House of Representatives, serving for four terms, and during his tenure as representative, he served in leadership roles on numerous committees. He chaired the Health and Human Services Committee and served on the Public Health Study Commission. He was an early advocate for fluoridating municipal water in the city of Gastonia and helped to create the Gaston County Public Health Dental Clinic, and Dr. Current has been a strong advocate for North Carolina's smoke-free bar and restaurant law. And whereas, Dr. Current has received numerous awards and honors, including North Carolina Dental Society Citizenship Award, the Gaston County Commissioner William Gaston Award, International College of Dentistry Fellow, American College of Dentistry Fellow, Paul Harris Fellow, the Gaston County Chamber of Commerce Spirit of Economy Award, and recently, Legislator of the Year 2013 Award by the North Carolina Association of Local Health Directors. And whereas, Dr. Current has also been active in a church by serving on many other boards and committees, and he is married to Elizabeth Ogden Current, and they have four children, nine grandchildren, and another grandchild to be born, and we're getting down to the wire here, in 2014. Now therefore, I, John D. Bridgman, as mayor of the city of Gastonia and the city council of the city of Gastonia congratulate Dr. William A. Current, Senior, for his accomplishments and thank him for his many years of service and his significant contributions to the citizens of Gastonia, Gaston County, and all of North Carolina. In witness whereof, I herein to have set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Gastonia to be affixed the 17th day of December in the year of our Lord, 2013, by John D. Bridgman, Mayor, and Virginia L. Crichton, City Clerk. Jim?
Bill Current, your office was on, is on New Hope Road, over by Pizza Hut over that way, and it's been there for many a year, and I just want to say, you're one heck of a dentist, and you're one of the first ones who started up the Gaston County Republicans, and that's one thing we didn't mention here, and I just want to say thank you very much, sir, for doing that, and for your service here in our town, and for the state, because you are a representative, and it's a pleasure and an honor to know you, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Current?
Thank you, Mr. Current. I can truly confess that I had real reservations about this, I don't know from whence it came, and I feel like I should be up here trying to figure out a way to present to you on behalf of my family just how great this community has been to us. After this heroism award, I truly feel somewhat humbled, but let me just say briefly, if I could, this is somewhat sacred ground to me, and I'll touch on that in a minute, but I think I'd be remiss if I did not think of all those who in my lifetime gave service to this community. And they all came back about the time I was an adolescent young man, and I watched the contributions they made, so I accept this and their, and all the other people that have made such great contributions to our city. Also, would like to say this ground is, as I started to say, a little bit hallowed to me, because this close by was Armington Hotel and the train station, and my beautiful mother was passing through here on the way to New York to get some wedding clothes to marry a gentleman from Atlanta. My father, who had been brought here by Mr. C.K. Bryant, they were first cousins and farm boys up in Iredale County, came from very poor circumstances, but Cousin Charlie Bryant convinced my dad to come to this viable town, and he had started an electric business here, which most of you are familiar with. But anyway, I owe a lot to the Southern Railway and to Mr. Bryant, of course, but even more than that, my beautiful mother, she picked this young lady who's standing with me out, when I brought her home, invited her to come back, and she said, "Well, Bill's not gonna be here," and she said, "I don't care, I want you to come see me." She's given me four wonderful children, as pointed out, and we have great grandchildren. And I did want to mention all those guys, like Chicken Rush Smith, my next-door neighbors who shot down Japanese zeros quicker than they could build them over in Japan, and the four guys who live just a block from me. Bobby Gallagher, Fred Spurrier, Arthur Fuller, Albert My, I mean, Alan Sims. All those boys didn't come back, and the many others. And we owe so much to them, but anyway, thank you so very much. I truly don't feel deserving of this, but it's nice to be around and hear your obituary touched on and be alive. Thank you very much, and I appreciate it more than I can say.
Thank you, sir. Here's your...
Ms. Craig?
I would like to say something to...
Me too.
Bill has been a role model to a lot of the younger generation, and without some of his leadership in showing some of us younger folks how to do it, I just appreciate everything you've done to help grow Gastonia in its leadership positions, and I don't think you're retired, but it, but, because I don't think you'll ever retire, okay? Stay busy, stay active, and stay involved in our community.
Thank you for what you do. Hold on. Thank you so much.
Hey, dear. How are you? You doing good? Good to see you.
Bill, good to see you. Have a Merry Christmas. Just right. Oh, that's all right. Again, I know, it's wonderful. Yeah, see y'all. Mr. Representative, Mr. Representative, I wanted to say to you in closing that, I know you, you know, you and I go way back, and I know you very well, and we're friends, and I hope, I know you're big, I know you're big-headed, I know your head is big right now. I want you, you and I, remember this for poster boys, always will be, for that old saying, "Behind every good man is a good woman," and you've made that extremely clear. Thank you. Second. All right, there is a motion, second. Discussion, all in favor? Okay. All righty. I have been asked, it's like a time, if I may, very quickly, is under the presentations of item F, is to go to number five, Chief Helton of the Gaston Police Department, is the introduction of new central district leadership, Captain Rodney Aldridge and Sergeant Nancy Capstran, and they have to go work, quick, down the street. So I'd like to go ahead and call them. Rob?
Mayor, council, good evening, and if I could have this opportunity before we begin, just to say Merry Christmas, and I hope all of you have a safe holiday season. It's my honor and privilege tonight to recognize our new leadership in the central district, and also to...
I have been asked, um, it's like the time, if I may, quickly, is under the presentations of item F, is to go to number five, uh, Chief Helton of the Gaston Police Department, it's the introduction of new central district leadership, Captain Rodney Aldridge and Sergeant Nancy Capistran, and they have to go work quick down the street. So, I'd like to go ahead and call them, Rob.
Mayor, Council, good evening, and if I could have this opportunity before we begin just to say Merry Christmas, and I hope all of you have a safe holiday season. It's my honor and privilege tonight to recognize our new leadership in the Central District, and also two of our most newly promoted supervisors. I'll begin with Sergeant Nancy Capistran, if she can step up. Sergeant Capistran began with our department in 2005. She's worked in the Patrol Division in Criminal Investigations and has served on a number of task forces and special assignments, including the Hostage Negotiations Team and also the Mobile Field Force. She earned a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Chicago and was also awarded her Master's Degree in Business Administration from Fire for University. She is currently assigned as the Community Coordinator Sergeant in the Central District, which encompasses the Downtown Business District, and this is a very busy assignment. It's a small geographical area in town, but this assignment is a very busy one with all the events that happen downtown, so we'd like to recognize her tonight.
I apologize, I'm not a huge public speaker, they're making me talk. They've been picking on me all night. Um, I'm very humbled and very excited to get to know you guys and get to shake hands and work with you especially. Um, I'm, I'm just excited, I'm, I can't fill those shoes behind me, and the, the captains and sergeants have been in my position, so I'm just, I'm very humbled and, um, ready to work, so, thank you.
Next, I'd like to recognize Captain Rodney Aldridge. He began with our department in the year 2000. He's worked in the Patrol Division and also in Criminal Investigations and has served on several task forces and special assignments, most recently serving over the Street Crimes Unit. He's the Commander of our Hostage Negotiations Team. He's also a graduate of Gardner-Webb University where he graduated with a degree in Psychology. He is currently assigned as the Central District Commander, which oversees the Downtown Business District. He coordinates and oversees all the special events and programs downtown as a part of his assignment. So at this time, I'd like to also recognize Captain Rodney Aldridge.
Once again, I know a good number of you, and we've got to work together, and it has been very humbling to me because everybody that I see are great people, and the people that I work with in the Central District are all very humbling to me in the fact of how good of people they are. I'm honored to get to do what I do, I'm very blessed to work with the people that I get to work with, and I look forward to continuing on in the future, and I'm very thankful. Thank you.
I've had the opportunity to work with both of these supervisors over the past years, and certainly they have my full support, and I know they're gonna do a great job, and we're gonna have a promotional ceremony Friday to recognize both of them and also our new hires. It's gonna be Friday at 3:00 P.M. at the Police Department, so if any of you are able and can come by, certainly come by and join us for that, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Rodney, there's just something, when I look at you, there's something about you I like.
We have a little income.
Yeah, that's, all right. Okay, uh, the next presentation, uh, is Jeffrey and Mary McNeil, owners of Piedmont Safety Workwear. They here? Okay, the, uh-
Your Honor?
Yes?
I, uh, they had, uh, Mayor Protem Craig and I had met them at a chamber function a couple weeks ago, and they expressed interest in coming before our elected body to just say thank you for us taking a chance on them with the Ideal Grant Program. And what struck me was the fact that they recounted that it changed their lives, and I'll tell you why. Because they had, uh, been back and forth about starting the business, and Jeffrey counted to me, he said that by us hearing the business plan and going ahead and kind of putting our stamp of approval on it, gave them the impetus to move forward with their business, and in fact, they've opened a second business in Rock Hill as well. So they're very appreciative to our council, and when, when someone says, you know, "We don't know how to, to thank you all," you changed our lives, and I, I think that's a, a great earmark for our ideal program. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number two under the presentation is, the presentation is, uh, is Erin Welch, Program Coordinator of the Community Foundation of Gaston County, and her request for in-kind services is Run for the Money, April 12th. Who's keeping that beautiful baby?
Um, Ms. Shaw, Ash's wife.
Okay, all right.
Um, Mayor Bridgman and members of City Council, it is a pleasure to come before you tonight, and I am here tonight with Ernest Sumner, the Executive Director of the Community Foundation, to thank you for your past support of the Community Foundation's Run for the Money. In the past 11 years, the event has provided over $12 million to Gaston County nonprofits, with over $2 million coming from the Community Foundation. The run has been a very successful project of the Community Foundation, but even more so for those organizations that has, that it has supported and for our community as a whole. It takes a tremendous amount of time to stage an event like this. We rely on hundreds of volunteers and many sponsors. The City of Gastonia has been a champion sponsor since the inception of the run. Due to the overwhelming success, the Community Foundation is planning Run for the Money 12 for April 12th, 2014. On behalf of the Community Foundation of Gaston County, I am here to ask for the city's in-kind sponsorship of Run for the Money 12. I met with city staff earlier this month to go over specific requests and turned in required permits and fees. The Rotary Pavilion here in downtown Gastonia will be the anchor for the event, the run route will begin and end downtown and wind through the Yorkchester neighborhood. So I will at this time be happy to answer any questions you have about our requests and this event, and again, thank you for your overwhelming support in the past, and we hope we can count on your support again for this event in 2014.
Any questions of air? I'm gonna make a motion, is there a second? Yes. Well, we all know how wonderful Run for the Money is. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hmm. Okay. Um, next under the presentation is Ms. Amanda, Amanda Fuller, Gaston Youth Connected Programs Support Specialist.
Hi, I'm excited to be here tonight, and I will try to keep this as brief as possible. Um, but my name's Amanda Fuller, and I work with the Gaston Youth Connected Program. Um, we are a community-wide initiative to reduce teen pregnancy in Gaston County, and several of you might have heard of us before, hopefully, um, but we, um, we are funded by the Centers for Disease Control and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention through APP-CNC, which is the Adolescent Pregnancy Prevention Campaign of North Carolina. This is a total investment of $5.8 million over five years. We started in October of 2010 and will end in September of 2015. We're now in year four, and we were just one of nine communities across the nation who received this funding, so we're very proud of that. Um, our goal was to reduce Gaston County's teen pregnancy rate by at least 10% by September 2015, and to develop infrastructures that support evidence-based pregnancy prevention strategies. Some of those things were to build community capacity and leadership, to implement evidence, evidence-based programs with fidelity, to link teens to quality health care, to educate health care providers about best practices in adolescent care, and the sustainability of programs like this after the funding leaves in 2015. Um, the good news is that Gaston County's teen pregnancy rate dropped 13% in 2012, um, and since the start of the Gaston Youth Connected Project in 2010, um, the teen pregnancy rate has dropped 28%. So we have already achieved our first goal of reducing teen pregnancy, and we still have a lot of work left to do. The good news is that teen pregnancy rates are declining in North Carolina as a state. The better news is that in Gaston County, teen pregnancy rates are declining much faster. Um, we are currently ranked number 48 in statewide teen pregnancies. That means in the 100 North Carolina counties, one being the most teen pregnancies, 100 being the least teen pregnancies, we're number 48, so we're making progress there, too. Um, this is, you'll see a map, this is a map of teen pregnancy births, uh, of teen births from 2007 to 2011, just to kind of show you the hotspots where we are seeing the most teen births. The red are our very high teen birth areas, and that's where we're trying to focus a lot of our efforts on. There were 273 teen pregnancies in 2002, in 2012, 77 of them to ages 15 to 17, and 196 or 72% were to older teens, not minors, but to older teens ages 18 and 19. Um, so that just shows us that we need to really focus our outreach on those older teens, um, in the next two years. It's also interesting that out of the 273, 273 teen pregnancies, 182 were to Caucasian youth, so that also shows us that we need to step up our outreach to, to reach Caucasian youth. The great news that we have to share, that we are making news, we are making headlines across the nation, is that we have eliminated the disparity between African-American and Caucasian teen pregnancy rates, which means that in Gaston County, if you're African-American, you're no longer more likely to be pregnant than a Caucasian. Um, and only four other North Carolina counties have lower African-American teen pregnancy rates, and we are very proud of that accomplishment, and very proud of how fast teen pregnancy rates are dropping for all populations. Um, part of the Gaston Youth Connected Initiative is health care, and we know how important health care is. I encourage you, if you have not been out to the Teen Wellness Center on Hudson, um, that you stop by there for a visit. Um, they are providing high-quality, teen-friendly health care, they're trained in the best practices of health care, they take walk-in appointments, they have later hours, they have teen health advocates that work directly with our youth, um, and it's free or low cost for teens. So we are doing really great things in this community, not just with the Department of Health and Human Services, but Gaston Youth Connected has many community partners, including Ashley Women's Center, Gaston Family Health Services, and Courtview OBGYN, that are helping us provide high-quality, teen-friendly health care for our youth. Gaston Youth Connected also understands that teen pregnancy and cost matter. Um, in 2012, the cost associated with teens, with teen births was half of what it was in 2008. So using a complicated formula that I can't tell you right here, um, and based on $2,008, we are talking about a difference from $10,000, $10 million in 2008 to a cost of $5 million in 2012. So the drop in teen pregnancy is saving us all a lot of money, um, and we know that taxpayers save about $4 for every $1 that they invest in youth. We ha- we have had, um, 1,377 youth participate in our Gaston Youth Connected Programs. The average age is 14 and a half, 79% of them come from high-risk areas, so if you'll recall, there's red areas on the map where the most teen births are happening. 53% of our program participants were male, and 44% of them had already had sex before entering our programs, so they needed a lot of the information and resources we were able to provide. Um, and if we, we give these participants a pre-survey and a post-survey upon, um, being in one of our programs, and if we converted that to a 10-point scale, we would know that they increase their knowledge of abstinence, they increase their knowledge about birth control, and they increase their knowledge of where to go and get health care if they needed it. Um, so participants in Gaston Youth Connected Programs are significantly increasing their knowledge of how to not become a teen parent. We also did a survey, I don't know if y'all have heard of this, but I can give you all the results in email, but we did a survey of parents back in 2011. We contracted an independent research firm just to make, we wanted to find out what parents thought before we started, um, our programming, and 95% of Gaston County parents agreed with the statement that teaching teenagers about sexual health will help them become healthy adults. 91% of Gaston County parents would support their own child participating in school-based sexuality education, and 9 in 10 Gaston County parents support the work of, um, support the strategies that GUSC is using. We also, um, did a community survey in 2001, a door-to-door survey, um, where we worked with the North Carolina Institute of Public Health, and we wanted to find out what the community thought about teen pregnancy in Gaston County, and 95% of Gaston County residents think that the community needs to do more to prevent adolescent pregnancy. 86% of Gaston County residents think teens should be able to talk to a doctor about pregnancy prevention and to access birth control if needed, and 9, 9.3 of Gaston County residents think teens should only get information on abstinence. The other 90% think that teens should get information on abstinence and medically accurate ways to prevent pregnancy. Um, we have engaged a lot of the community. We have eight program partners providing programming, we've had 32 different locations host our programs for youth, we've had 37 organizations host presentations for parents, we've had five partners in providing medical, providing teen friend, teen-friendly health care. We've had 22 companies help us raise awareness during May's Teen Pregnancy Prevention Month. We've had 11 churches involved in hosting programs and presentations, and we've trained 34 young people in our Teen Action Council that have reached out to 550 youth about teen pregnancy prevention in our county. And I am here because we also want to engage you. We are trying really hard this year to reach out to the leaders in our community, to raise awareness of what we're doing and to get your support, and to have you help us connect to other teens in the county and in the city of Gastonia, to connect us to other organizations so we can make presentations about our work or presentations about the state of teen pregnancy in Gastonia and in Gaston County, um, help link us to parents so we can help teach parents how to make good health care referral to their, referrals to their teens, and to reach out to teens so they can know, um, what their rights are and how they can go get help, or how they can participate in one of our programs and learn how to not become a teen parent. Um, and I passed out my card, and I've passed out, um, a copy of my presentation from tonight and some other resources, so I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them. If you want more details about the parent survey that, survey that we did, or the community survey that we did, um, I will be happy to, to email those to you. But we just wanted to say that we are very proud of all the hard work and dedication that many organizations in this county are doing to reduce teen pregnancy and improve the health of teens in our county. So, and I have to give, um, Mr. Current a shout-out. His daughter is part of the Gaston Youth Connected Initiative, and she is amazing, and she is really changing lives of youth in our county.
Thank you.
Any questions of, uh, my man, comment?
All right, thank you for having me.
Thank you very much. We have the information. Thank you. Number, item, uh, 4F is, uh, Christie Chris, Key Account Manager, Reference Recognition of Daimler Trucks, North American, Receiving Energy Efficiency, Efficiency Award through Electric Cities. Christie?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm gonna go ahead and ask Mike Mazingo with Electric Cities to join me up here as well. Um, over the past four years, the City of Gastonia has had a great partnership with Electric Cities in being able to offer incentives to our customers for energy efficiency. Um, this has been a great program. It's given us opportunity to, for our agency to comply with state renewable energy requirements, but by doing that, invest in our customers here. Um, so I think that it's been a very successful program. Over the last few years, we've been able to give out many of these awards, and these, um, projects vary in, in size, from, um, large projects that we're awarding tonight to small ones, um, in the amounts of, you know, a thousand or $2,000. So we've, we've really benefited, um, in this, this program for Gastonia. These projects are, um, based, are awarded based on merit and also an evaluation of their efficiency and cost per kilowatt hour, so they actually go through a pretty rigorous, um, evaluation standard in order to be selected. And so we're very fortunate and pleased tonight to offer, um, our largest award to date, um, to Daimler Trucks in the amount of $108,000 for significant upgrades to their HVAC control systems, um, that's helping to reduce the overall electric expenditures in our plant here in Gastonia. So with that said, I'm going to, um, ask, um, Bobby Pearson with Daimler to join us. And we'll do the big check presentation. These are always fun. And he does have the real one, too, that actually can go to the bank. Mike, I didn't know if you-
Well, I'd like to commend, uh, Daimler and, and the group there. They've worked very hard over the last several years to improve the electric efficiency of the plant. As you may know, they are now running 24/7 practically, so these energy efficiency projects are gonna really help them down the road, and the nice thing about, I know Paul's looking at, "Well, we're losing revenue," but, uh, having a plant go back to full, uh, capacity and strengthen their, uh, presence here in the town, looking forward, looking long-range down the road, I think this is gonna be a big boon to the, to the city. And also commend Christie and Paul and your finance department in making all this happen. Uh, Christie's been very proactive in finding projects, large and small. I know we have a project-
They've worked very hard over the last several years to improve the electric efficiency of the plant. As you may know, they are now running twenty-four-seven practically. So these energy efficiency projects are going to really help them down the road. And the nice thing about, I know Paul's looking at, "Well, we're losing revenue", but having a plant go back to full capacity and strengthen their presence here in the town, looking forward, looking long-range down the road, I think this is going to be a big boon to the city. And also commend Christie and Paul and your finance department in making all this happen. Christie's been very proactive in finding projects, large and small. I know we have a project going on now at a Subway shop that's, the guy's replacing his old fluorescent lights with an LED light, and we're going to be helping for that. It's going to be a couple hundred bucks. But they're taking the initiative to be more efficient. And that's going to help you in the long run from electrical costs as well. So congratulations to you and the city.
I'd just like to say on behalf of Daimler Trucks that, thanks to Mike, but also a special thanks to Christie and Paul and the city of Gastonia, not only for supporting us and our energy-efficient programs, but just in your basic support that you provided us through all the years of ups and downs when we're freightliner, and the project that we just completed off Fairview Drive with the new three hundred and ten thousand square foot facility over there. It means a lot to us to have a partnership with a great community and great city such as Gastonia. So again, on behalf of Daimler Trucks, I'd just like to say thank you, and I look forward to us doing this many more years down the road. So thank you.
I promise you that this community is very, very proud to have y'all here. Happy to have you here, too.
We're proud to be here. Thank you.
Long time. Thank you. Thank you, Christie. Okay, public expression, item G, I believe we covered all the others. Each person is limited to a total of five minutes speaking time here. It says, I have one name signed up, is Joseph Lenihan on the Loray Mill. He's the top.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Joe Lenihan, managing member of Loray Mill Manager over at the Loray Mill. Tonight with me, my partners, John Gumpert and Billy Hughes. And really, we just wanted to stop by this evening and give you a quick update on how things are going, and to thank you. And I think, as this gentleman said before us, you know, partnering with a community like Gastonia and Gaston County has been a wonderful experience for me, especially being from California, where we don't have such great relationships, sometimes with our city councils. It's been terrific. And the city staff, the building department, the power department, the police, the fire, the folks all around the city have supported us in everything we've attempted to do, everything we're doing every day. And it's tremendous to work in a community like this. And it is a big project, but it takes a lot of people to do this. And everyone in your town has been helpful, and I wanted to say thank you for that. I also wanted to give you a quick update. You know, we started work basically in May, and on phase one of the project, which is a hundred and ninety residential units and about a hundred thousand square feet of retail and commercial, we're hoping to have, and we're expecting to have, our first residents move in on April first of two thousand and fourteen. So really, less than twelve months from the time we started. It's been a very, very aggressive schedule. We've already invested almost twenty million dollars into the community and into the building itself. So we've got, you know, by year's end, we will have pretty much two floors done, the bottom two floors. As you drive by the mill, you can see the new windows and probably four of the six floors already in. Many people have taken a tour of the facility. The sandblasting is done on four of the floors. We've got framing started on four of the floors. We've got, I think, windows going in, in the storefront windows in the bottom two floors. We've got power going into the building. You can see some of the parking lots are done. There's just a tremendous amount of work, and on any given day out at the site, we have over two hundred people working out there. And again, that's thanks to you and the county for hanging in there with us for over five years, as we continue to ask you for extensions, and we went through that process of trying to raise the money for the debt to do this project. We hope you guys are proud of that. We certainly are. And to give you a quick update on some of the changes we've made as we've gone along, we looked at what we had, and we thought we could improve the product, not just another sort of garden-style apartment complex. We want this to be one of the best apartment retail complexes in all of North Carolina, not just the Charlotte market, not just Gastonia. When we looked at the amenities of the facility, we decided to upgrade those. When you get a chance to walk through the building, what you'll see are cutouts in the hallways from one floor to the next. So it feels like the building flows from one floor to the next, from six to five, from four to three, and from two to one. We're talking to tenants now about the restaurant out front. We've got a brew pub area in the back where we took out all of the equipment in the boiler room, and it's a tremendous space if somebody wants to go in there. We're marketing to those folks. We're marketing to a gymnasium. We're marketing to coffee shops, dry cleaners, small grocery stores. We've got a tremendous business plan and business model right now. We've hired CB Mecca to work on our leasing, and they've been out going door-to-door, basically talking to multiple different types of tenants. We're getting a lot of response. When people walk into that building, they're thrilled with what they see. And we're looking forward to moving in, probably our first tenants during the summer. I've got fifty-eight seconds. To let you know, we have two hundred qualified leads. That's not just people that called on the phone. We have hundreds of people that have called. These are people we've called back and said, "Look, we don't have apartments due until April. Are you still interested?" We're talking to people about, over fifty people are putting deposits down in early January when we're accepting deposits. I can tell you, our pro forma model showed moving in fifteen people a month, every month. We'll probably have fifty in the first month alone. This project, and not just from Gastonia, we have people from Charlotte, Gastonia, the Gaston area, it's all over town. We're doing very little marketing so far, and we're going to increase that. We have a website, LorayMillLofts.com. And on that website, you can see a video, the progress of the mill. You can see all the amenities that we've added, not only the openings, a large pool in the back, cabanas. We've added the gymnasium in the back, a possibility of an indoor pool. We have a dog park. We have, oh, the fire pit, the open-air kitchens, the barbecue areas in the back. These are all amenities for the people that'll be living there. And again, it's to improve the lives and the quality of the lives of the people that are going to be living there. So I just wanted to give you that update. I know I'm out of town, but just to let you know, things are going very well. We have a large number of people working every day on the site. In fact, it's so exciting to us right now, we're going to be looking at phase two already, which should be, you know, open opportunities for us for senior housing, for other commercial, whatever makes sense, and we'll be bringing that to you in the future. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer those. But I can tell you right now, we couldn't be happier. It's a wonderful project.
I'm going to waive the time with the importance of what we are talking about here for a bit. Any questions?
If we could get a motion to suspend the rules for, for council.
I'm going to have a motion, Your Honor.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Campbell?
I was going to ask-
I made the motion.
I was going to ask him a question.
Go ahead.
Second Street, are you going to be opening that up, or is it going to be closed off, or what's proceeding with that?
And that's a great point, and I apologize with my time. One of the things I did want to talk about are, actually, a couple of things. With the entry coming into the facility, will mainly be on Firestone Road, where we'll have a large entry sign entering in saying Loray Mill, beautiful signage on both sides of it. Originally, we were going to close Second Street, ballered off both at Vance and Dalton, and there would be no entrance from that side. And we felt, you know what, that really wasn't the right way to handle this situation. We want this to be a part of the community. We want it to be inviting from all sides. So what we did is we narrowed the street down a little bit, and we put speed bumps in there. We don't really want this as through traffic, but people can drive in, they can enter from both Vance and Dalton. There will be a speed bump in there, but it's like entering into a mall area, but a little bit in the old-fashioned sense, because what we're putting up, we've designed our own lighting in the parking lot. We're not just using the traditional type of parking lot lighting. It's a more historic light fixture that we're putting in. We'll have landscaping throughout the entire facility that are specific to this building and its history. We'll be lighting up the entire building, so at nighttime, the entire six hundred thousand square feet will be lit up from the bottom, from the midsection, from the top. We've hired a specialist in the lighting. And it's all about creating an environment. When you drive in to eat through, on Second Street, either Vance, Dalton, or you come down Firestone, what we want you to do is feel something different. You're driving into an area that this is an experience. It's not just simply, "I'm going into another apartment building."
I was on a tour there, and I saw that you guys had not only worked on the first and second floor, but you've already started work on the top floor and the views of Crowder's Mountain and the park that Brenda Craig was instrumental in, Councilwoman Craig. You could see it from there. It looks beautiful. I mean, it is just absolutely, and the way you guys cut out the floors and, you know, made light coming in from all areas, just done a wonderful job. I mean, it's going to look really, really, you know, Billy took us on the tour and he did a great job, and just wanted to say, you know, thank you for that. That was nice.
Thank you, and the architects did do a wonderful job. They've cut skylights through the top of the roof as well, letting that light come down into each floor, and we'll be going down through all six floors. And the views, I think we sold the corner units probably fifteen or sixteen times. But get in line on that one, because people are starting to put deposits down.
Yes, sir.
Approximately a year ago, I was fortunate to be at a charity event with, it turned out to be a property manager for a major retailer, and I had actually spoke with Mr. Munn on this. They, I did explain to him what was in store at Loray. And now that you're moving forward with the leases and stuff, what I'd like to do is get together, and I don't know who I'm talking about. They did call the city, and I'd like to be able to move forward, I mean, if you're at that capacity now, and I'm so glad you came in tonight, to forward that information to you, and maybe we could put you two folks together.
That'd be great. You can forward to us any information we have. Billy is on-site all the time. We can give you the information today, or me, or Bob Clay from Cobblebanker, who's handling all of our leasing space throughout the entire facility, as well as, and I know you folks did us a great service in assisting us in leasing, and you've got some space in there in the building as well. And we're working, you know, day-to-day to get that stuff leased up, get it off of the books of the city when, as quickly as possible. And I tell you, working with City Manager Munn here has been a tremendous, tremendous experience. It's worked very well for us. And we're working together on that to make sure it goes as smoothly as possible. So thank you for that. And if I may mention one more thing I didn't, which is the History Center. And for those of you that haven't been over there, we talked originally about a very small History Center, some pictures and things as you walk through the aisles of the commercial area, the leased-up area. This thing has taken on a life of its own, and what we're doing now is getting out of the way. Billy really championed this, and we had our first meeting about five months ago, and we brought in the head of the History Department from UNC Chapel Hill. We brought some folks from museums down in Charlotte, the folks over at the Loray Baptist Church. We brought all these experts together, and they met. And they started talking about this History Center, and the fellow from UNC said, "Look, here's what I can do. I can put all this database on a computer. You can go in there, and you can, by name or by address, you can put in a person's name, it will pop up on the computer where they lived, what they did in the mill, what floor they worked on, how much their house was, where they came from." And all of this data is in the census data right now at the county of Gaston. And he's going to take all that, and he's got folks working right now at UNC to take all that data and boil it down into a template for us. And that's going to be in the History Center, and we found this archway in the first floor that was completely covered up, and we're going to enclose that for the History Center. We're going to put the computers in there. You'll be able to go in and type in your information, find out, you know, who you want to see, what street you want to talk about. It'll all be there for you. There's a video we've done on the history of Gastonia and the mill, and we're doing the pictures and everything else throughout the hallway. So it's much bigger than we had ever planned. I think originally, we had a hundred thousand dollars. We'll probably triple that by the time we're done, for just the History Center.
Great. Councilman Gallagher.
Thank you. Mayor Protemp, appreciate that. Sir, one question I have is, you're going to have move-ins come in April first, two thousand and fourteen. Is the police substation going to be ready at that time as well?
The police substation right now is scheduled for, I believe, July in the summertime. We, right now, have just moved Firestone out of that section of the building. The old Firestone maintenance area was utilizing that space of Loray Mill, all the way up until just last week, by the way. Now, we've got them, we had to build some new space for them in their building. That was part of our deal with them. We actually were in their half of the unit, building space, to move them out. Now, the chief, a lot of the folks from the police department have been in. We're working on design drawings now with them. We've had our interior designers with them, our planners with them. We're designing the space. It's over three thousand square feet. You know, we're talking about, I think there's the entire city of Gastonia's West Division moving over into the mill. And we want to make sure it's done correctly, but it looks like, right now, probably around July.
And you could see most of the stuff on LorayMillLofts.com? Is that the-
That's correct. LorayMillLofts, with an S, dot com. And we also have a Facebook page of Loray Mill Loft.
Councilman Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Protemp. I just wanted to touch base with Chief Helton. And Chief, if you got a second here, you could just explain, we have a number of viewers that are obviously excited, I'm sure, about this, the progress that's taken, and why it's so important to grow our police substation as the project grows versus trying to play catch-up in the, once a project is already in place, and we may have some strategies that we're trying, crime prevention strategies, that really, we're trying to play catch-up on with the community versus what we're doing here, where we're taking a proactive measure.
Certainly, we want to be a part of the community from the very start. We want the community to feel us as a part of what's happening, as a part of progress, as a part of this renewal. And so we want to be present there and take our west district up there, have a real presence, get to know everyone, and we want the neighboring area to know us, to know our officers, to know who we are, and to recognize us from this point forward as we work there.
Thank you very much, Chief.
I have a question for Joe. The used car lot that faces Franklin.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And because I'm getting some calls on that, because I represent the west, what are y'all doing with that?
Well, we don't own that.
You don't own that? Okay.
No, we don't own the car dealership, nor do we own the pawn shop.
Okay, okay, okay. Well, then I'm asking the wrong person.
Yes.
Okay.
But I can tell you that we are interested in both properties. We have talked to both owners. I said originally in a meeting over at the Convention Center that we're not going to go in and buy up, you know, all of the Loray Mill Village and try to make changes. That's not what we're trying to do here. We're going to, you know, provide the impetus, this forty million dollar improvement. But there are a few things that we think would be appropriate, which is, if we could get all that property back all the way to Firestone, you know, and create that entrance into the mill without going through someone else's building and then the Loray Mill sign, but all the way off of Franklin, so that as you're driving by Franklin, the view corridor into the mill will be forever saved. I can't control that, or my partnership can't control that, but we are speaking to the owners. You know, they're both nice gentlemen. They want what they want for their property. It's their property. So whether or not that ever comes to fruition, if anybody here has a, you know, knows these gentlemen and wants to help us negotiate a deal, we're willing to talk to them. Because we would like to put that land back together and forever save that corridor of an entrance into the mill.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Thank you for the update. We certainly appreciate the knowledge and what you are doing and how you are doing that at Loray. It is, it is just something that you don't have words for so many times, okay? The beauty, what it's going to do, the impact, what it's going to do. So we just appreciate what you're doing for us. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank all three of you very much. Item one, under the regular agenda, is a resolution accepting the proposal of First Tennessee Bank National Association in connection with an installment financing for various vehicles and equipment, three million, one hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars.
Crystal had to leave, so I'm going to present on her behalf. The resolution before you tonight is our annual financing for the equipment and vehicles that was approved with your two thousand and fourteen annual- that was approved with your 2014 annual budget. That amount is $3,164,000. We sent out requests for proposals to seventeen different financial institutions. We received eight proposals. First Tennessee Bank was the lowest responsible bidder at 1.18% and our legal fees not to exceed $3,500. Staff recommends the approval of the attached resolution accepting the proposal of First Tennessee. And we will bring back to council in January the final closing documents for this deal.
Do we have any idea, I mean, only because First Tennessee Bank National Association is not a common name in Gaston County? Have we ever had any dealings with them?
We have not. And in receiving this proposal, having not worked with them in the past, we talked with our bond counsel about this particular institution. And he has worked with them and closed several deals recently. They are coming to North Carolina and there's more presence.
Okay. Do we have any idea what the terms are gonna be?
This is a 59-month installment fin-
Fifty-nine months?
Yes, ma'am. Fifty-nine-month installment financing, 1.18%. And what we're being told now is the $3,500 not to exceed in legal fees. The estimate is about $2,000 for those.
Okay. Over here on Exhibit 1-4, number two, the city manager and the Director of Financing Budget Administrator of the city are hereby authorized and directed to execute and deliver such documentation as being necessary to accept the proposal of the bank. When I read that, I read that maybe it does not come back to council for our final approval. Is that right?
It will. And that is, the financing calendar has that slated for the first meeting in January. It may end up being the second meeting in January, just because with the holidays, getting all the closing documents complete. But it will come back before council. What's resolution allows the city manager and I to do is to work on those documents with the bank and with our bond counsel, get them to, where we're comfortable with all the closing documents, to bring back to you guys for approval. We can sign the closing documents after you guys approve that second set in January.
Okay, okay. That's what I wanted clarified and that clarifies that. But that 1.18% is a holding rate?
Yes.
And it's a fixed rate for 59 months?
Yes, ma'am.
At this point in time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, sir.
Just want to make a motion that we accept as proposed.
Discussion anymore? All in favor, please, raise your hand. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Item two is a traffic ordinance reduction of speed limit on Vance Street. Rusty Ball, City Engineer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Item before you tonight is reducing the speed limit on Vance Street between Franklin Boulevard and Garrison Boulevard. I'm gonna put a little picture up on the Elmo here so the folks at home and everybody can see on their monitor kind of where this is. This is Franklin Boulevard up here on the top, Garrison Boulevard down here on the bottom. This is the segment of Vance Street right here. This is the Loray Mill project that we just heard about and all the work that's going on here and the Firestone Mill operations back behind it with residential areas down in this area and certainly down on the south side of Garrison Boulevard, as well as up on the north side of Franklin and the north side of Airline Avenue there. What, the impetus for this request is, this spot right in this area is the Gastonia Optimus Park, our Optimus Club Park that we just put in. And I'll throw another drawing up on the Elmo that may help describe what's going on. You see from the park, this is Vance Street over here on this side. And again, the Loray Mill would be up in the right-hand corner. This park sits very close to Vance Street. Not many of our parks sit this close to a street. And for that reason, because of the nature of a park and the nature of the use of this park, it's a passive park and it's supposed to be, have a strong neighborhood component, we expect a lot of these residential areas to actually walk to this park. That's why you see there's not a whole lot of parking included in this. That it was, it would be a very proactive and a big safety improvement if we could reduce the speed from 35 miles an hour to the standard 25 mile an hour speed limit that we typically use in these areas. I got a couple other pictures that just give you a feel for the neighborhood and what we're doing there with the park involving Vance Street. This is looking from, at the park, looking kind of north up towards Franklin Boulevard. You can see on the upper right-hand corner there is the skyline view, I guess, of the Loray Mill project. The park is on your left. And we, there's a small little parking area there on the right that Firestone owns and we're working with them to establish some parking there for folks that do have to drive to the park. And we have the crosswalk there in the middle that you see on a raised, kind of a raised crosswalk that we put in. Looking at it from the other direction towards Garrison, you can kind of see, this is, these are both construction action photos that we had in the library there. You can kind of see how it slopes down towards Garrison and we just feel that there's gonna be a lot of pedestrian activity going on here. And we really wanted to reduce that speed limit and try to improve the safety for the new park. Staff recommends, again, reducing that speed limit. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I was just gonna make a motion to approve.
All right. Discussion?
Discussion. Okay, thank you. I am 150% in support of reducing the speed limit. I don't, there's, there's through traffic from Franklin and from Garrison that cut through there. And I was glad to hear Loray saying that they maybe were gonna try to open second because there's an awful lot of traffic coming down on Vance because they can't go straight through second. The other thing, what I would like to just throw out and have staff look at is either putting some additional tables, if that's what they're called, to also slow down the traffic, or speed humps, okay? I'm not real sure that I understand the difference between the two, but that's an engineering issue. I would like for staff to look at that because I think that once Loray opens and they do start getting some activity in there, I think Vance is gonna continue to have more and more traffic. So, the 25-mile speed limit is great, but I think that if we were able to do something else to slow that traffic down, it would be more, it would be just as beneficial. So, I'll just give that as an idea.
Absolutely. We'd be glad to look at that. I think routinely, just recently, FHWA released a new study about speed humps and speed tables and how they work. And, you know, you try to stay on top of the latest research, but you also want to make sure that whatever they're saying is applicable to the context of your community. You don't want to just take stuff out of a book and set it down somewhere just because it says you can. So, we would definitely want to take a look at that and keep our options open and see what can be done. Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Rusty, when you're reviewing Mayor Protemp's request, that may be a good area for us to try some of the rubberized speed calming devices. I see with the road width, the visiting the Optus Park, I think that that could pay us some dividends as far as the ease of installation and also ease of maintenance in that area. So, I might want to go with that.
We continually look for new products on the market and do research on them and give things a try and wash them out. We'll be glad to do that. We've looked at those in the past. There have been maintenance issues with them in the past. We find that the permanent asphalt ones actually hold up better. They don't damage the road quite as bad as drilling the holes in the road to mount those rubber things into it. But again, we always keep an eye open for new technologies and new ways to do things. So, we would absolutely be looking at that. Yes, sir.
The reason I bring that up is in keeping with some of the area of Loray and also the Optus Park, the products out there now, I believe they're about nearly 100% from recycled materials. And that's a real strong point, I think, for, you know, what we're trying to do in that whole area with the rehabilitation of the mill and also taking that, of that land and making the park out of it. That's why I suggested.
Yes, sir.
One more comment though. Certainly, I'm in favor of this and the park we have there. Definitely want to protect all the kids, citizens here there. But we're talking about adding the speed humps and stuff. I want everybody to be cognizant before we run down there and start calling speed humps. We have a huge waiting list for other neighborhoods and areas where people have waited for years for speed humps. So, I don't want this all of a sudden to top the list and then everybody else is saying, "Okay, three years now." There's three one out there. So, let's kind of keep that in mind of priorities and so forth and budget. I don't want to ruffle any feathers, but certainly keep that in mind as we move forward with this.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
We've got a motion in a second.
Is there a ready to vote? Any other discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three is a resolution authorizing conveyance of real property of historic and architectural significance, 319 South Vance Street and 326 South Vance Street, Preservation North Carolina. I'd like to call on Attorney Ash Smith, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm filling in in Myra's absence tonight. She's not feeling well. You recall in September, the council accepted the donation of two properties in the Loray Mill area. We're back on Vance Street, 319 Vance Street and 326 Vance Street. The city accepted the donation of those properties from Wells Fargo on the condition that we're gonna turn around and convey them to Preservation North Carolina, who's gonna put preservation covenants in place so that when the properties are sold, they're redeveloped in a fashion appropriate to the Loray Village. So, it is in front of the council to authorize the resolution conveying the property to Preservation North Carolina. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Smith? Yes, sir.
Do you ask, do we have something in place legally that these properties will be maintained? I mean, this isn't gonna be a situation where they can't be sold, that come the spring, summer, the grass is gonna be getting high, there's gonna be things falling off the house, that sort of thing. This is not gonna become an eyesore and one of those situations and we're saying, "Well, it's Preservation North Carolina. We really can't do anything about it. We gave them the houses." I mean, I want to make sure the city can go in and say, "If they aren't sold and they aren't kept up," that the city can go in and dictate that they be maintained.
Yeah, the properties would be subject to the same ordinances about tall weeds and grass and nuisance conditions as any other property.
So, there will be no exemptions or anything?
We have a tradition of working with Preservation North Carolina. When they owned the Loray property for a long time, you know, the grass got, you know, higher than we liked and we would have to ask them to cut it and they would cut it. But it was a little bit of give and take there.
And I understand, you know, being the Loray Mill, that you, we're talking about two residential properties.
They're subject to the same ordinances and as any other dwelling.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item four is a Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee report. Councilman Todd Pierceall, chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. At the December 4th meeting of the Central City Revitalization and Housing Committee, we took up two different agenda items. Neither one would require a vote from the council, but if, with the council's permission, the first one's pretty easy to tackle. Number two has got a lot of information that you can read there, but I will kind of just give you the highlights from that, if that will be okay. But the first item on our agenda was the 2014 Summer Concert Series. And the committee discussed some of the information provided by staff on the city's involvement in funding a previous summer concert series. We were asked questions about the turnout in response to the past summer series and possible options and associated costs for events for next summer. Ms. Melanie Steins was there, along with Ms. Rachel Bagley from staff. Melanie coordinated the past summer's concert series and she was there to answer committee's questions. And the committee asked that Ms. Bagley and Ms. Steins get together to bring basically some numbers, options, plans for 2014 and to report back to us in January, at our January meeting. And they agreed to do that. So, we'll be looking forward to their report in January. And then item number two was an update on the Building and Development Task Force request. And at our last meeting, I informed council of the task force that I had appointed to give us a little bit better understanding of how the builders and developers in our communities feel about working with the city and our ordinances and if there was anything we could be doing better or they could be doing better. It was basically to open up a dialogue and tweak some things. And at the last meeting, I commented on what the task force had brought forward. What you have before you in your agenda is some of the responses that the city had to that, those requests by the task force. Again, this is gonna be a continuing dialogue. The task force has been given these responses to look over and then at the January meeting, we'll discuss it again. But at this point, the committee is not ready to bring any forth, bring forth anything that the council needs to vote on as far as any changes, ordinances, anything new the city will be doing. It's still just a dialogue. So, the committee did vote to continue that conversation to our January meeting. And believe it or not, those two items took up over a good three hours. So, I know that's all very brief there, but a lot was discussed, but just really information for the council. And if you have any questions, any of the committee members will be glad to join in and answer those, but it is for your information at this time.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
I would just like to clarify
Yes, sir.
One thing, just for the record, where it says, "Action taken on item two." The committee voted unanimously two to zero to accept this information for information, this information only. And the reason why that's two-zero is because Councilman Pierceall had to leave the meeting and go to a TAC, MPO meeting. So, he was not there for that final vote. So, just for the record, yes, sir?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
It should be three-o because Mr. Pierceall was not excused before he left. And so, he was counted in the affirmative for the motion. So, it should be three-o.
Okay, so we need to clarify that.
I thought that's what you were gonna bring up, that it should be three to zero because I did leave an excuse, so it counts in the affirmative. So, we'll get that changed for the record.
That concludes the report. Yes, sir, Mayor.
Thank you for that report. Okay. Moving along, item five is the City Attorney's Report.
I have no further report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Mr. City Manager?
I would like to wish the council and the public Merry Christmas as well. And a few things going on. We're going to have a neighborhood meeting that's going to, will get you all the information on this. This is for the neighborhood, Todd's neighborhood, in January. This is on the 14th, Temple Baptist Church, 701 Little John Street at 6:00 PM. This is that task force that we're working on for neighborhood improvement, trying to work, this is essentially the RO's neighborhood, you know, in that area. And so, we've done this before, several years ago, and we're going at it again, working with the Police Department and Code Enforcement. But we'll give you an official notification of that coming up. Also, the council work session, we have got reservation at the Conference Center for that. We'll be sending you out some information about the kind of topics that we think we will want to discuss and also then want you to look at it and let us know what you really want to discuss. That's the important thing. We've already gotten some comments from the city council and encourage any of the ideas that you have about what we want to accomplish at that January 25th meeting. Pedestrian plan, there was a public hearing on, a public meeting on that yesterday and last night. And we've got a lot of good information. It's gonna look at comprehensively our sidewalks, greenways, all the ways people can move about the city. It's interesting, when you look at it, you can see not only the sidewalk pieces that are missing, but also are missing, but also even making crossing roads without pedestrian heads. And it's really we have we've been able to bring some improvement, but we have all these missing gaps. So you can't you can't go from one neighborhood to another in a lot of cases. So it will give us a good plan for the future. And by doing this plan, it'll allow us to get funding from state and so that will help us in the future. And finally, the sundrop improvements, working with sundrop, that's still underway. And again, there'll be pedestrian improvements on Franklin. And then finally, the Central Island Council governments have come up with their various alternative drafts, draft scenarios of growth plans. And so they are still doing some adjusting there, but that will be coming back to us, I think, shortly. Councilman Kimball may have more information on that, but we're looking forward to getting that as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
City Council report, Ms. Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to say thank you to anybody and everybody that had anything to do with the city barbecue. It was, again, a very wonderful opportunity and is attended by so many people that they get to renew some of those friendships when they're there. They just talk and talk. So I certainly appreciate everybody, the staff and everybody that worked real hard on that. I would like to just say that I hope that during this holiday season that we will all remember our men and women serving in our military in our thoughts and our prayers because they are out there doing their job to protect our country and not with their families. And again, I wish everybody that's listening in the council Merry Merry Christmas and please be safe.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to wish everyone in the community a Merry Christmas, happy holiday season. No other report.
Thank you, sir.
No report, just want to reiterate what Councilwoman Craig said about the city barbecue. Sure, that was nice. I want to thank everybody involved. I thank the ladies from the utility billing department that allowed me to sit with them and converse with them. Met some new friends there, so that was very nice. And also just say a word of thanks to our servicemen and women that are overseas. I know my cousin has their son, Kyle Dilling, is in North Korea and will not be able to make it home for Christmas, so they're doing without their son. So I know how hard that is with the military serving over there. And just wish all of our citizens and the rest of the council and staff a Merry Christmas.
All right, sir. Mr. Gallagher? Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. One, the Loray the Loray Mill tour was excellent. If you haven't been on it and get a chance, call Lucy Penninger or get in touch with Billy. It is just absolutely a wonderful place that is just energizing that whole west side. And Brenda, I have to reiterate again, Councilwoman, you did a fabulous job with that park. When I look out and I look over Crowder's Mountain and the sun setting behind it and a park there, it looks it's beautiful. You did a great job. The other item is I was at the meeting yesterday regarding pedestrians with the sidewalks, Ed. And, you know, I went there specifically to put down information on Modena because they are they're the ones that are deprived of having it up to Bradley Center and that's what they're looking for. And the community watch person was there, Heather and Stroop, and she had all accolades to say about Rusty and how well he's done with that group and how he has really partnered with them and gone to their meetings and he's really on top of it. I just want to give you credit for that, Rusty, for all you do. Really, thank you for that. The other thing is, two more things. One, I was at Irwin Center two Saturdays ago for the least of these. They were doing a toy drive for the kids that are fostered children throughout Gaston County. What they did is they raised money and they were able to go out and get gifts. They were able to wrap the gifts and in the meantime, the kids were coming in and they were meeting with Santa. Well, Santa had to have some helpers and they had some people dress up as elves in red and white tights. And it's like I lost a bad bet. I was dressed up, I felt like Buddy the Elf. But it was fun. And if you want to see a picture, go to least of these website, not website, but Facebook page, you'll see it. It's certainly not online. Last is this past Saturday, Toys for Tots had a toy drive at Walmart and Bill Starr done a fabulous job. I mean, a lot of people gave gifts and it was just a success and a half and I just have to hand it to him, he did a great job. And I just want to say Merry Christmas to all and to all a good night. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good night. Dr. Gird.
Yeah, I also would like to put in one big plug for the Toys for Tots program because I also saw Bill last night. We had a rotary, you know, Christmas party and we were collecting toys for that. And he claimed that he thought that the increase in requests was going to almost double last year. And so the need for these toys is tremendous and anyone who can, you know, provide a toy, it doesn't have to be wrapped. If you see these collection boxes, please take an extra moment and try to put something in there. If you can just imagine a child going without a toy for Christmas, it's kind of hard to imagine, but it can occur. And anything we can do to help make a child's Christmas a little brighter, I think, is a wonderful thing, so. But to all here and certainly all to those in the viewing audience, please all have a very healthy, happy and joyous Christmas with your families, your loved ones, and we look forward to an excellent 2014.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ron. First off, I'd like to say thank you to everybody that had anything to do with the Christmas parade and all those that came to us. It was certainly a blustery day and I thought that we had a wonderful turnout from the community and it was an overall really good time. Secondly, Mr. Mun, you're correct. Cog is in the final stages of compiling all the information that they've gotten from the community input as to the what roads that folks want to see improved, other areas of transit, and I would imagine by the first quarter they'll be releasing that. Next, Chief Hilton, I spoke with you briefly and I spoke with Chief Conley. There's a new program that the Department of Defense has out. It's the Pentagon 1033 program where they're allowing city municipal police departments to take over the ownership of the it's called a MRAPS vehicle, the Mine Resistant Ambush Protected Vehicles that were used in the various desert conflicts. And they're I believe that they're fantastic vehicles to be used for a variety of things. They cost over half a million dollars and they're going to be making those available. I have a document here for you. I believe that you've already started to move forward with an acquisition process and I think virtually pretty much zero cost and I think that's wonderful. I also would like our viewers to take a moment to remember the folks that lost some of their loved ones in the unspeakable tragedy at Sandy Hook Elementary just about a year ago. And lastly, throughout our barrage of sale flyers and e-commerce emails and all the lines to get the two-hour deals, I hope we can all take a moment to reflect on the real reason for the season and also the eternal joy that it promises all of us. And with that, just like to say good night. Thank you to all.
Thank you, sir. Last last Wednesday night, Ed and I hosted the quarterly meeting, I think it is, of the mayor manager. I think brother you and Flip were first chair this time, but that we did have it was a big crowd for us in the conference room and it was three new mayors in the county, Charivel and Belmont and Stanley. And so I think it was very productive. Lastly, we've all certainly discussed here Christmas and hoping and all of you put it in excellent perspective with our families and so on. I was asked to stop in yesterday morning at Shrimp Boat. And, you know, we've talked about a lot of places down through the term that where people feed people, like the veterans and so on. And of course, the shrimp boat's only being a block from here. They're not open on Monday. And they had a lot of people that tried to come in, but there were school buses. And where those school buses were from were was Webb Street, which very across the street from Temple Baptist Church that you're talking about, Ed. And there were two shifts of students and teachers. And for years and years, the folks at Shrimp Boat have done this. This is their way of giving back at Christmas to feed the children and the faculty at or most of the faculty at Webb Street School. And those children were so happy. Santa was there, not me, but there was another Santa there. I was a helper. Same Christmas carols, but what you notice the most is almost every one of them, they were smiling, they were laughing. And there's Christmas. So thank you very much. Thank everyone's here and that's watching. As has been said, have a fantastic, wonderful holiday with your luck. Thank you.